South Main, Joshua, Texas. We do have a quorum present. We are subject to the open meeting laws of the state of Texas. If anybody is listening in and wanted to comment on anything, we do have an online speaker card that they can fill out and send in. Start with the work session. First item is review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statements. Did anybody have any questions on the budget report or financial statement?
No.
All good.
Mayor, I would just add that as typically is the case, we received our tax, sales tax allocation. We usually receive it just about in the middle of our meetings. We're running about three and a half percent ahead of budget per the May numbers. As we mentioned last time, as we tend to try to remind everybody, sales tax allocations are two months in arrears. So those are March numbers, and as we all know, the economic lockdown started about mid-March. So that's good news in the sense of if that, you know, mid-March kind of timeframe, we really didn't see the negative repercussions or effects from the lockdown, obviously. The full 30 days of data will get probably around June 8th, you know, next couple of weeks or so, and then we'll get a sense of what, if any, effect it's had on us. But so far, it looks like we've kind of dodged a bullet. A part of that is because we already budget so concernately to begin with. You know, we keep expenditures down pretty low, and we only count on revenues to the extent, pretty much know we can count on them. And so while we have had a double-digit increase in sales tax the last couple of years in my budgeting, and with the council approval last summer was a significantly lower rate of growth from that, and so I think that's benefited well for us. Obviously, it's, you know, as they say, it's better to be lucky than good sometimes. So while we've been seeing some significant growth, the budget that we did has allowed us to not have to make cuts and not have to worry about revenues that we were counting on that aren't coming in. So that's why they had that.
Good, thank you. All right, next item is review and discuss the Johnson County ESD draft contract for the municipal power departments for the fiscal year 2020-2021. If I understand correctly, this is the identical to the contract we had last year and for the last several years?
It is. Chief Griffith is obviously on here with us. It is the same, Mayor. Aside from, if you look at the staff report, there's one section, Section 2 of 2.8, there's some wording change, but that has to do with some EMS certifications. But as Chief Griffith and I discussed, that's not going to affect our, any compliance issues that we have, and shouldn't affect us at all. So it's just an internal change the ESD did, but it won't affect us either way.
Anybody have any questions about the ESD contract?
Have they given you any figures?
No, we typically, Jerry, no, that we haven't. We typically don't get those until about July. They typically wait until they get their certified totals, kind of like we do, before they start, you know, kind of divvying up the money or establishing any, any natural figures. I suspect we won't have any until early, late July, August.
Yeah, so this will be the normal contract as we sign a blank contract with no figures and agree upon, and they just tell us what it is? Is that correct?
Well, actually, this, this is not, we're not signing anything this evening. This is, they actually wanted, you know, they send the contracts out, March, April, every month, and want feedback on them, of course. You know, we've gone through this desk before, a lot of some of the feedback that we've given them has ended up in the contract. If you remember, and some of those who maybe not remember, we now have two separate contracts with ESD, one for municipalities, which obviously applies to us, and the county volunteer departments. And so a lot of those, a lot of that is already in there, and it has been there for a couple of years now. So we're not signing anything tonight. This is really a review and comment period where if we want to recommend any changes, we would make those comments this evening, send those back to the ESD for consideration. Now technically, they want this back, I think Wednesday, yesterday, or Tuesday, or maybe even last Friday, because as we, as we know, their meetings are the same as ours are. Of course, we couldn't get this, we didn't get this before you guys until this evening, so they're giving us a little leeway on that to get this back to them in the next couple of days. But we're not signing anything this evening. It's just a review and comment period. We'll get the actual contract, the figures back in the next month or two, and that's when you guys will consider the actual, you know, approval of the contract.
Hey, Josh, looking at Section 5.02, the radio user fees, it's page nine, or page 11 of the contract. It says that they'll pay up to 14 radios for the department, any user fees above 10, and then 14 in parentheses. So is it 10 or is it 14?
Yeah, and I think in the next sentence, it speaks to the number of 14, so I would suspect that we could probably let, you know, notify them of that contradiction, but it's the 14.
Okay. And Chief, do we know how many radios we're going to be using?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I didn't quite catch that comment.
Do we know how many radios we're using that the ESD is going to be paying for?
No, I don't have the exact count, but I know it's, it's in the vicinity of 14. I don't think it exceeds 14.
Okay, thank you.
I just got a question for Tom. Tom, is there anything in the contract that looks any different than what you've been used to with other counties?
No, the only, like Josh said earlier, the only change is that one section, and it's highlighted in the, in the contract, and as far as I know, that's the only change. That refers to the EMS certification. They just essentially added another avenue that they would accept for EMS certification.
Anybody else have anything? If not, next item is discussion on providing assistance to the community businesses that have been impacted by the COVID-19. Josh and Miranda and I had had a couple of conversations. I think Alice is doing a good job of promoting on Facebook, different opportunities and what's going on in the city, what's open, what's not open. It would be nice if we were like Burleson and had an extra $500,000 sitting around that we could give out some money. I think type A is pretty well spoken for. I don't think we have any extra funds. I think it's going to primarily rely on us just to get the word out and push to keep our businesses on the forefront. Every time you get a chance, you know, try and visit somebody in Joshua. But does anybody else have anything they'd like to see us try and do?
Josh, has there been any talk, or have you heard anything of any state or federal funds that might be coming through to help us with that?
There aren't any, there aren't any funds via the Fed, federal relief, the CARES Act, or in, I think one thing to be aware of is the funds that come from the state ultimately come from the CARES Act, right? So what is happening is the federal government, like a lot of funds, a lot of, a lot of funds, if you will, and kind of relief packages, send it out to the states, for the states to administer those. So the state has some of their own programs, but the big, kind of the big, you know, the big money, if you will, the CARES Act flowing through the states, that's going to be specifically for the, for the businesses themselves to apply for. Now, there are going to be certain cities, like the mayor referenced a while ago, not a while ago, have their own funds that they're kind of, you know, via grant program or something like that, that they're helping businesses with. But there's nothing that cities can actually reach out to the federal or state government to turn around and then help private businesses with. Private businesses can do that without city involvement already. So there are, this wasn't really a part of the question, but there are, in terms of local government assistance, that the CARES Act does, you know, does take into account. So we, we actually have it all, I don't know if we have it in the budget, because it's a summary, but it was a summary report this time. We have a separate account, and we're, we're accounting for all that stuff. So the city can actually apply for relief for any COVID-related expenditures we have. But in terms of private business relief that the city would kind of administer, they really don't need the city for that. They can do that on their own.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
Yeah, Joe, I think I just want to point out, though, that, you know, the city's at the lowest end of the, the pole for the entire process there, that there's not going to be any funds coming to us. There's going to be no support, in fact, there's going to be less support. If you saw what the governor said this week, in regard to what their expectations are of municipalities and so forth there for tax burdens, and hey, we get it, we're all taxpayers, we're all there, we all understand, but just as a overall awareness, the expectation is for us to take the brunt of the, the damage and, and then just let it, let it ride on our backs.
Now, he didn't say he was reducing the sales tax on the Texas portion of it?
I didn't, I didn't quite see that.
No, I didn't see it either. I think he was putting it all on the, the cities for their property tax. I didn't see any relief at all coming from the state or any additional funds coming to the state. Also, just one comment, I saw reading the TML bulletin yesterday, and I may have read it wrong, but it looked like any money that was coming down actually goes to the county, and then we have to get it from the county. So.
Right, that's, that's correct.
We've been real successful there. One thing I did do, just to let everybody know, I sent a letter to the county judge and all four commissioners, bringing up again about the dispatch fees. What I asked was that, you know, for this fiscal year that we're currently in, it was at 50%. It was going up to 75% for the 2020-2021 budget, and I asked that they keep it at 50% with all the things that have been going on. Also reached out and contacted several of our neighboring cities, their mayors, and they were going to send in the same letter as well. So not going to hold my breath, but at least, you know, there's a possibility we might get a little bit of relief on the dispatch fees. I have not heard back from the judge or any of the commissioners yet.
Yeah, and just, just as, in terms of dollar amounts, what we're looking at, as we start working on next year's budget, we're anticipating anywhere from, again, like the mayor said, if you, if you remember, when the county commissioners decided to start, decided to start charging the smaller cities that were kind of, hadn't been relying on the Johnson County dispatch, RP, they started to, they decided to start charging for the cities for that fee, or that service a couple of years ago, and we're going to gradually, in a graduated fashion, implement those fees at 25, 50, 75, 100%. So in four years, we'd be, you know, ostensibly, theoretically paying close to about $115,000 a year for dispatch. Hasn't exactly worked out like that in terms of the dollar amount so far. We anticipate about a $20,000 to $40,000 increase in those fees next year. We should actually be beginning, if we don't get the, an estimate by tomorrow, sometime next week, if they haven't already sent that out to the chief about this, this is also on the back of another probably $60,000 increase we're going to see in the OSSI reporting system fee that we paid to Burleson as a part of being a part of that. So, you know, we may be looking at about $50,000, it just, just fees to outside agencies to be able to, you know, for public safety. So this letter that the mayor sent out was, like you said, was in the attempt to try to say, hey, we're all, we're kind of all in this together, you know, kind of give us a break this year. But those kinds of dollar numbers in terms of what the mayor was talking about.
Next item was discussion on potential of adopting local homestead exemption on city property tax of 5%. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, and I believe Terry was going to work up ordinance or whatever we needed to do. I think Josh might have had some comments that he wanted to make.
Yeah, I, I haven't sent this out, because I didn't know, quite honestly, it would be kind of poisoning the well of the discussion, if you will, but I probably, I probably have. I would be glad to send this out to you all, so you can look at it on paper, but probably tend to a dozen different issues or topics that I think probably need to be taken into account in this discussion. You know, one of the things, matter of fact, one of the things we just talked about was, you know, these user fees that outside agencies are starting, you know, charging us, specifically the county is kind of the bigger one, that continue to go up. You know, we're looking at approximately with this, with our, with our recent estimate, which we talked about last time, doesn't include protest loss numbers, you know, about $103,000 to $110,000 less in revenue that we would be receiving, where we might have dropped a 5%. This is on top of, I think, of a number of issues we have when it comes to, you know, attracting and retaining fully police staff, police department. We have not had more than three people in a five-to-six-person public waters department all year long, because we just haven't been able to attract people to even apply. We've got, you know, we had a, a budget of a 10% increase in the health insurance premiums, and it came back at 20%. And we're looking at probably another 20% increase in the next, in the next calendar year above that. So there are, there are just a lot of things that whenever we start talking about reducing revenue, however that is, and of course, the context of this conversation would be the homestead exemption lowering that revenue, that I just think you guys might want to, you know, take into consideration as we talk about reducing revenues going forward. Luckily, like I said earlier, so far, as when it comes to sales tax, the virus issue has not been an issue for us, but regardless of the, of the virus issue, we've had kind of some ongoing challenges when it comes to sufficiently funding issues, funding expenditures. You know, we're into the general fund reserves to about $150,000 to $100,000 on average a year. And so, you know, any, obviously, any type of reduction in revenues, but either continue that, continue that habit, if you will, or, you know, potentially, you know, we either have to start cutting services, you know, not filling positions, and I don't want to be the kind of a downer, you know, the sky-selling person, but, you know, we've had some really good audits up late in terms of adding to the fund back, but a big part of that is because we just haven't had a fully-staffed PD or fully-staffed public waters department for the last two years. So those are some things that, you know, I wanted to bring up while y'all, while y'all discuss this.
One thing I might do, I think, you know, Terry's supposed to go have, I assume, have the ordinance ready for our next meeting. Maybe by that time, Josh will have some numbers so that we can actually see what the property tax revenue, I know all the loss figures won't be in, but we should have a little better figure of what our actual increase in property tax revenue would be.
Yeah, that's true. We typically get an estimate in May, an estimate in June, and then we get our certified in July. Now, this year, a lot of things are kind of up in the air, but when the legislature changed the property tax legislation, they really changed the calendar, too. Matter of fact, I was just going over the, the calendar, you know, because we're under that 30,000 in population threshold, and then you have the de minimis rate, which we've talked about, and we will continue to talk about as the summer goes on, whether the, the proposed rate actually exceeds the voter approval rate, but then you have to factor in the de minimis rate. So I'm not really sure what the calendar is this year, but in terms of getting our certified, that, that should actually should stay the same. So we should be getting another estimate in another two, three weeks. Theoretically, that, that will include an upbeat protest loss number. Now, just as, as a mode of comparison, last year in our May numbers, we had $1.8 million in protest loss in May, okay, in our May estimates. When the June numbers came out, that ballooned to 15 million, okay? And then when the June, when the July numbers came out, they came down to 4 million. So it, and I think last year, because of the environment about appraisal increases and whatever probably drove that protest loss up, we're up pretty quickly between May and June. I'm not sure we'll see that this year, because I'm not hearing the same kind of 20 and 30% increases that we heard last year. So who knows, right? But, but yeah, yes, Mayor, and in the next two or three weeks, we should have a better view of what we're looking at.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any other comments? If not, then we'll go on to next is discussion on contracting with Johnson County Elections Department for the November 2020 general election. I assume this is something we do every year. Is it going to be different since we're going to be having a November election? Any issues, county?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll just kind of give a little primer here, but because of the, again, because of the election, again, like you said, Mayor, being postponed until November, it being a general, you know, kind of a presidential election, a kind of a bigger election, typically the, the county doesn't, and Alice, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'll let you jump in here in a minute, but the county only, I think it's every, every odd year, or every even year, doesn't, actually won't contract with cities, and so we kind of get in the bind, but Alice did reach out to the county in terms of estimates and what contracting with the county for the November election would be. And this is where I will just turn it over to her.
I have been in contact with the election administrator, and I've asked for quotes to possibly do a joint election with the county. I've gotten two quotes. The first one is to be on the same ballot. It actually came in at $56,000. The second one is to be on our own ballot. It came in at $19,000. Now, the good news is that only includes the city of Joshua and the county. It did not include the other entities that's going to be joining in. Talking to other city secretaries, I know there's going to be at least five other entities joining in, and in that case, it would bring the $56,000 quote down to 12,000, and it would bring the $19,000 down between $7,000 and $9,000. And the more entities that joins in, and there's up to 12 that can, the price would go lower. Couple of things to think about. The cost reason it's so much higher is because this is going to be a presidential election. The voter turnout's going to be a lot more. Something else is in May, there's only seven early voting days, and out of those seven, two of them has extended hours. November, there's 19 early voting days, and seven of them has extended hours. So that's what drives the price up. Some other things to think about here, if we do our own election, kind of cost estimates can be between $5,000 and $6,000, and the reason is, we can have early vote-in just here at City Hall, but Election Day, we have to supply a judge and three clerks at all five locations that the county's at. Something else to think about, if we do do a joint with the county, we will have a much larger voter turnout. I'm afraid a lot of citizens won't go to two different locations to vote. And the last thing is, being a presidential election, this is going to be a very political year when it comes to the election. Now, we have plenty of time to make a decision. I think the contract don't actually have to be approved until August, so by then, we would know exactly how many entities will be joining in and see exactly what our cost will be.
But just to update us, if you hear more communities that are joining or whatever, and if the, if you know a month where, okay, the cost is going to change, just give us those updates, maybe in June and July, and I guess in July is when we'll have to make the decision.
I would just jump in here, just in terms of budget process and the calendar. So it, it may be that we have to, we may even have to go with just an estimate, for the best case, or best guess estimate, in terms of when the, like I say, the, some of the things we have to, we have to decide on this year, one being this, this issue, whether we contract with the county or not, the homestead exemption issue, a lot of these things have to be decided prior to, so kind of drop dead dates that we would otherwise have in previous years. So, you know, there's, like, August 7th is the last day that I can propose, I can submit the proposed budget to the council. It's followed with the city secretary, so we may not have exactly the number that, you know, we're waiting on from the county, and, you know, in August at some time, but we'll try to do our best in terms of, I'll try to do my best in terms of getting a really good estimate to include in the proposed budget, so we, we have an idea. You know, the, the one thing I think that, you know, Alice brought up in terms of the political nature, of course, it's, it's an election, so everything's political always, but, you know, obviously, I think the council would, in their discussions and consideration of this, is not, we're going to want to weigh city staff being involved in the election process, and of course, that's, that's has never been a problem before, I guess until last fall, and whether you want any city, city staff involvement at all as well. So that'd be one of those considerations you guys make, not only in terms of, of what it costs, but who's, who's actually running the elections for the city.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Hey, just a quick question, Joe. If the city was to decide to say go in-house with the, with the election, are there not third-party companies that we may be able to contract with to manage and staff that election instead of just city staff?
Alice, you, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm not sure about private companies that can do this. You're going to have to have certified judges and election clerks that all go through the state, and are all going to be registered with the county, and those are typically the people, like, we ran our elections last fall, those are the people that we use. So although, because of the, because of the, what we had to do with the city secretary not being here right at the time that we held, held the bond election and the special election, I and Mike and Joanna had to kind of scramble to be those officers, especially during early voting. That would be the same way here. We would have to reach out to people that are already, you know, certified and registered with the state to do that, and I'm not aware of any private companies that actually, or third parties that do that, aside from what, the people that we already have. But Alice, you can step in here if you need to.
That's correct, and one major thing is there is residential requirements for the judge and for the clerks.
Alice, did you say, though, that if we joined with the county and the other cities came in, too, and there was like the five locations, we're not really supplying anybody at that time? They're, they're voting at county locations that they designated, and so they're using the county judge, or, you know, whatever officials that the county's designated, and we just fall under that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So hopefully, that would end up being the cheapest option and wouldn't require any personnel on our side. Anybody else have anything? All right, anybody have any questions on our regular session agenda items tonight? All right, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda, or assume nobody's wanting to speak under public forum, correct, Alice?
That's correct.
Okay. Next item then is the consent agenda to consider approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on March 26, 2020, and April 16, 2020, and May 12, 2020.
Will we approve?
A second.
Okay, got a motion by Scott Kimball, and a second by Robert Purdom to approve the consent agenda. Anybody have any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands. Looks like 7:06. Motion's approved. Next is the regular agenda. First item is to discuss considering and take action on an ordinance granting to Atmos Energy Corporation, a Texas and Virginia corporation, its successors and assigns a franchise to construct, maintain, and operate pipelines and equipment in the city of Joshua, Johnson County, Texas, for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of gas in, out of, and through said city for all purposes, providing for the payment of a fee or charge for the use of the public right-of-ways, and providing that such fee shall be in lieu of other fees and charges, accepting ad valorem taxes and repealing all previous gas franchise taxes. This is something I think we do, what is it, ever five years, Josh, or three to five years? It's pretty standard. If I'm not mistaken, we're part of a coalition that we're in with just about all the cities in the North Texas area, and basically, somebody else and their attorneys go through all of this, and we just sort of get the fruits of their labor. Anything you want to add, Josh?
I'm sorry, I think the agreement is just renewal from the current one that exists that's coming up for expiration here pretty soon, and I think the, the only change here is that the franchise fee to the city was close to 5%, which is pretty standard, pretty standard for the area.
Anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Going once?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Alice.
I got a motion by Robert Purdom, seconded by Angela Nichols, to approve the Atmos Energy contract. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Mayor, I could just add real quickly, Mayor, this is a 20-year term.
Okay.
Just, it's a little longer than five years. It's, it's a, it's a 20-year term for this.
Now, is that new this year? Because it didn't seem like they've all been that long.
No, they're, they're usually, Atmos gives a pretty standard, this is a franchise, not, not those grants and those other things we've had.
Okay.
Where the cities negotiate, and they have, they have certain cost components. This is just the, this is just the franchise agreement that gives us the 5% fee back. And so it just, just, it's a 20-year, it's a 20-year, bars in 2040.
Anybody else have any questions?
I got a quick question. So Terry, on, you know, just kind of reviewing the, the agreement, it's just on the franchise side, I get it. There's a lot of protections for the city, there's a lot of protections for the gas company, but nothing for the landowner or homeowner, depending on, you know, those that would be, you know, involved as well. Is that pretty standard?
Yeah, that, you mean, on the, on the rates that customers pay?
Not necessarily the rates, I'm just talking about, when we talked about Not necessarily the rates. I'm just talking about when we talked about, you know, when they, when they move lines, when they move gas lines, stuff like that. I had a lot of, you know, talk in regards to that.
Yeah, it's pretty standard. It's governed by state law and a couple of cities in the area. Richardson was in some litigation with, I mean, with Encore, with Atmos over the years. And so, so the, the utilities code actually addresses a lot of those issues. So, so these are pretty standard deals. The, the biggest fight over the years has been the percent, percentage of the franchise fee. And this one's at five percent, which is quite frankly not a bad fee.
What about the twenty years? Does that seem excessive or is that where everybody's at right now?
That's, that's pretty much standard for every city.
Mayor, if I may, just let you know that Atmos Energy, their rep is online. If y'all have any questions for her.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for her? If not, then we've got a motion on the table. So I'll call all in favor of approving the contract with Atmos Energy. To raise your hand. Looks like it's six oh. Motion approved. Next, discuss.
Hey, just real quick, Josh, if you can get me the rep's number, I would appreciate that. Just as a follow-up.
I have it, Josh.
Next item is discuss, consider and take action on the interlocal agreement between Johnson County S U D and the city of Joshua for water utilities, facilities, relocation and maintenance relative to the Joshua Meadows Phase Three B development. Josh, you want to brief us on that a little bit?
Yeah, actually, I've got, I think Aaron is with us tonight to speak to that. Aaron Moltenato.
Yes, sir.
Aaron, you want to speak to this, the interlocal with JSE and Joshua Meadows Three B?
Yes, sir. This is pretty, uh, pretty much, since I've been here, it's been the same agreement that was made with Joshua or, yeah, Joshua Meadows Phase Three A and also the Wildwood Edition. It was a, a developer's request in having the water sewer lines in the right-of-way and also in the streets as is shown on the attached map or the plans, I'm sorry, on, in the packet. And so it's, it's been pretty, uh, pretty, pretty standard, I think.
Yeah, so ju- just a little bit of kind of a clarification on that. This agreement for new development, right? So for new construction, so we're talking about phase, like you mentioned, Phase Three A of Joshua Meadows, but now Phase Three B of Joshua Meadows, Wildwood. We also had this with Joshua Crossing over on Cooper, on Cooper Lane. We're allowing JSE to put their infrastructure in the right-of-way, right? And this agreement, while allowing them to do that, says that since we're allowing them to do that pre-constru-, kind of a pre-construction setting, that if and when we want them to move their lines, then we would, we would have to pay for that to happen. We've got, we got areas, we have areas in the city where they have their lines in our right-of-way, but we don't have these types of agreements. So if and when we need them to move, they're going to move at their own cost. So that's what these, that's what these agreements are. It's only for new construction. So we're basically, this is before, during the engineering phase, during the review phase, before anything goes in the ground, we're saying, okay, we're, everyone's aware of where this and stuff are going. And this is where we want the lines to go. Because as you know, a lot of these, JSE wants, you know, kind of like an exclusive easement, and it's taking up a lot of people's front yards. And, you know, in addition, they don't want to go into any other utility easements. They want their own exclusive easement. And then it's basically taking up everybody's front yard. So what we came, we've come to this to kind of mitigate that for people. We've also been working, just as an aside, Terry and I and Steve James and Karen Mitchell, our planner, have been working on amendments to subdivision ordinance. Maybe on the, on the agenda tonight, to try to get ahead of this. We're not having to do these every single time a development comes up. But right now, we don't have this in place in a uniform across-the-board situation. So we have to have this for every development, we're having this for every new development, every new construction phase of development that comes in.
Anybody have any questions?
I just got one question, Joe. Is this, if you look on the Exhibit B, construction plans for Joshua Meadows Three B Edition, and look over there where it says City of Joshua, Texas, three of those six city council members are no longer on the city council, if that makes a difference?
Good question, Josh. Do you think, or Terry, do you think that would make a difference?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Blame it on them if something's wrong, man.
They got Merle's name on there or no?
Frankly, Robert, I'm not sure. Robert, I'm not sure why they've listed the council member on the construction plans.
I don't either.
I don't. Frankly, I'm not sure I've seen that before. Aaron or Terry or Mike may have seen that before, but I'm not sure I've seen them listed. They may just be formally a few years in terms of, of, you know, who, who the, who the officials are at the time. Obviously, this is not correct. They did, they did do their homework on this and tell them who they exist in, the city council people were. But no, that's not going to make a difference in the construction plans.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Do we need to include in a motion on this that we allow the city manager to enter into this agreement? Terry?
If y'all want to, the mayor can sign it. But if you want, if you want to delegate that to Josh, that's no problem at all. We, if we want Josh to sign it, we just need to put that in a motion, move to authorize the city manager to execute the interlocal agreement between JSE and the city relative to Joshua Meadows Phase Three B.
Somebody want to make the motion?
So, so it really doesn't matter whether it's Josh or Joe that signs it?
Normally it'd be the mayor, but if you want, you can delegate that to Josh. There's no problem at all doing that.
Well, you know, the mayor's spending all his time down at the lake now, so. It might be a little difficult to get him up here to sign it.
I come back here once in a while.
I'll make a motion, just leave it for the mayor to sign.
All right, that's a deal. All right, got a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Got a motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Robert Purdom to approve the interlocal agreement between JSE, the city of Joshua Water Utilities Facilities Relocation and Maintenance Relative Joshua Meadows Phase Three B Development. Any further questions? All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Next item is discuss, consider and take action on a waiver application filed by Heather Kelly regarding the height requirements of a privacy fence. This is a lady that her house is relatively close to Main Street. I think, you know, they were wanting a little more privacy in their backyard. The way Main Street is, it was raised a little bit. So when you drove along, you could actually look down and see into their backyard and with the eight-foot fence. I guess she feels like that gives her the privacy that she was looking for. So she's asking for a waiver. I still think there ought to be some way, Josh, though, we can get this into zoning requirements to where we can say the minimum requirements is six feet, the maximum is eight feet, and not require everybody to come in and do a waiver every time they want to do an eight-foot fence.
Yeah, I would just, you know, as we talked about again earlier this week or late, late last week about that issue, you know, the, the, the issue with the standard height across the board when it comes to the, the ordinance itself is uniformity, you know, so everybody kind of knows what the standard height is. Obviously, if you've got a, it stands to reason, if you have a developer coming in, like say a Wildwood or Cooper Valley or some other place, not just for Meadows, because you can count on the Wild fences out there. But, you know, someplace, you know, if you have a six to eight feet, theoretically, you can have this kind of thing going on in a neighborhood. Now with a developer, that is likely not to happen, I admit. But that's typically why you have a standard, you know, of course, a, a standard fence is six foot to begin with. So that's usually why that is in most, most ordinances to begin with when it comes to across the board, across the cities. Now, I would, I would also mention, this, this fence has already been built. This fence is already up. We, as, as, has, has happened quite a bit. Actually happened in my neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. People put up fences over the weekend. And we, they either don't know that they need, they don't need a permit or don't ask or whatever, whatever. And we ended up having to kind of backtrack into things. So this fence is already up, just as a, just as an aside. But I don't think there's any issue with making a range of, of height when it comes to fences. But the reason the six-foot fence is there is because the standard fence is already, is already six feet. It's kind of just a basic, basic height, so.
But we couldn't change it to say the minimum for a subdivision is six feet, which means I would assume all developers would do the original fences at six foot. But if somebody wanted to come in and do an eight foot, I don't think it should require a variance to come in and do that.
I'm not saying that, I'm not suggesting it should either. What I'm saying is the reason it's six foot and people have to come in for a waiver to begin with is because a standard fence is already six feet. And so that's when you look at subdivision or zoning ordinances and the standard height, the fences across the board is already six feet. That's why it's six feet to begin with. But yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we can't change it. I'm just saying that's why people have to come in for a waiver right now.
Right. No, I got that. Okay. Got off subject. Does anybody have any questions about the fence?
Yeah, I've got one quick question. So they built the fence without the permit, which not unusual, I guess. But I noticed the applicant also referred to, they just built the pool. Did they build the pool without a permit?
No. Hey, Jerry, Josh, this is a different house. This, this is not the fence with the, that's already up.
Isn't that the one on Main Street?
No, they're actually one house off. So they're, they're doing it right.
Yeah. Okay, well, there you go. Then I make the motion we approve.
All right. Got a motion by Jerry. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Got a motion by Jerry Moore, seconded by Rick DePriest to approve the waiver application filed by Heather Kelly regarding the height requirements of the privacy fence. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Looks like six oh. Next item is discuss, consider and take action on board appointments. We had Dennis Quinn resign from the planning and zoning board as of the, the last meeting. He had been on for several years. Brian Sears has turned in an application. That's Brian's bald head that you see there at the bottom of the screen. Has turned in an application. He would like to serve on the planning and zoning board. So we have an opening and we have an applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't have any objection. I, we approve.
Have a second?
I will second.
Got a motion by Jerry Moore, seconded by Angela Nichols to approve Brian Sears for the planning and zoning board. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six oh. Congratulations, Brian. Alice, we'll be getting in touch with you. She'll let you know when the meetings are going to be and packet information and everything that you should need. And glad to have you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Glad to be a part.
All right. Next is staff reports. Anybody have any questions on any of the staff reports?
I'd like to just point out, I, I see Tom still on the call, that looks like our missed calls is actually was really well, well-managed. It looks like one of the lowest I've seen in quite some time.
Of course, that's the first report that's come out since I started. And I don't know, I don't really have anything to attribute it to at this point. Hopefully it'll continue.
I just didn't know. So there's, you didn't do any different on the reporting or anything like that? It was just straight to able to just, you've got some pretty good team and staff that's, that's working pretty good?
Right. The numbers were reported exactly as they were before. And I, you know, I'll just attribute it to the, hopefully that they are deciding that they want to participate more than they have before. We'll see what happens next month.
Nice, nice job.
Thank you.
Good job, chief.
Thank you. Also, I'm sorry, someone asked earlier about the number of radios we were using. I did a little research sitting here and it appears that we have eight radios that the county is paying for at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. Only question I had was on the new business report. Still don't feel like I see all the new businesses. I think we've got a doctor's office that's moved in and I never did see them on the report. So I don't know why. These are people that have just moved in and not gotten a CO or, or where we're at. But I personally like to see when we have new businesses, because I like to try and stop in and just say hi and introduce myself. And if other people ask me questions about, hey, what's going on in the city, it's nice to be able to tell them what, what new businesses we have, so.
Yeah, we've talked about that before, Joe. I think we knew, we all need to get on the same page in terms of how we're defining a new business because now, as it shows in the report, if a certificate of occupancy has been issued, right? So that ends up, that ends up being, that business ends up, ends up on the list. And I think there's been some, some of you have asked in the past about, so maybe they're, they've, they've, you know, applied for maybe a building permit or some things like that. So technically speaking, they're not open yet. And so their CO has not been issued. And so they're not making it to the report. And I know, you know, in terms of, the way we look at it internally is if they're not open, they don't have a CO, they're not open. And so they're not a new business yet. While you may see it, or you being, you know, a community member might see, weren't being done on a specific building as you drive by, doesn't necessarily mean the way we reported that it's a new business. So I guess we probably need some clarification on what we're defining as a new business. Because there've been a couple of that we've seen certainly over the last couple of months. Somebody has applied for a building permit and they're still not open because of the virus, right? So I think there may be some clarification from you guys.
I think it'd be real easy. Just if, I think if they turn in a building permit, I would like to know, just so that, again, people ask, hey, why aren't there any dentist offices? We can say, hey, there's a dentist office being worked on. So number one, if it's a building permit, and then I'm fine with the CO. But like I said, I don't think that doctor's office is accepting patients. So I'm hoping they've gotten a CO by now.
There's actually a big sign that there's accepting patients.
Right. So those, those two items.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at. So Mayor, what I'm hearing you say is you actually want more detail in the report. Because right now, you know, we've got a building permit report, but it doesn't say what the businesses are.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the new business report. What I'd like to see is when they get a CO, they'd show up on the new business report and under future new businesses, I would say make that when they applied, did a permit. That way we'd know, hey, there's something getting ready to happen.
That's what I want clarification on. So the previous page has the new permits, right? So the permits year-to-date, the permits for the year.
Yeah, that, that's fine. But that doesn't tell me who they are, so.
That's what I'm asking you. So you want an additional on the, on the future businesses, you, you, you want that tied to not applying for a certificate of occupancy, but applying for a building permit?
Yes. Just, just a slight modification to the new business report. That's it.
Well, not all, not all new businesses build buildings.
Well, there's also on there, it's already got a new owner in an existing location. So we would pick that one up if somebody just moved in and is using the same office space.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions on future agenda items?
I would like to thank Alice for her public information request, information she put on her report.
She does a lot.
Yeah, she does. That's good information. Also like the way the Facebook's being used to engage with people. I've actually heard a couple of pretty nice comments about suddenly they're getting some decent information on there.
Joe, I read in, in tonight's paper, it says there's going to be a public hearing on a request to go to an R-one L lot over on Littlebrook Road. Didn't we talk at one time about a blanket change in zoning for that area?
I think we've talked about it several times. I think the issue is, is that, you know, if we were to ever redo our zoning map, that would be a time to get it or to discuss whether or not we could do it at that time for a whole area. But otherwise, if somebody wants that, they have to come in and be, all right, you're shaking your head. Go ahead and talk, Josh.
No, I'm just saying, this wasn't on the agenda. So if, if this is a future, if this is a future item for a future agenda, we need to get it on the agenda so you guys can talk about it. You know, y'all, Terry can correct me if I'm wrong, but we started a whole other discussion on zoning issues. I'm not sure who you guys can do that this evening with it not being on the agenda.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking is, is should we put that on the agenda for next month?
We're bringing back.
Be on the agenda for next month, Robert?
Sir?
Are you, is that what you're asking for, to be on?
Yes, if we could, if we could put that on the agenda and to see what we need to do to, it's pretty expensive to do this for an individual, one of the ten. for an individual, one at a time.
So maybe we could just put something on the work session, would that be all right and discuss it? Okay. Anybody else have anything? Well, if not, then we're adjourned at 7:20 and everybody have a great evening.
You too.
One more, old age. Everybody safe.